Okay, we'll officially call the August 22nd, 2018 work session of the Town Board to order. We'll welcome everyone. We'll let the ministry reflect that all of the board members except Andy Moore is with us. Andy is traveling for business and will not be here this evening. We have a number of the staff and we also have a number of distinguished audience members and we'll get to them here shortly. So the meeting is officially called to order. We have the minutes of August 8th before us and we'll entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded discussion on those minutes. Seeing no discussion on the minutes, I'd ask for all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they stand approved as written. We so thank you as always. The monthly reports, I think, are mostly in and those onesie twosie that are not, we'll make sure that they are submitted by the end of this week. So thank you to those department heads that have gotten them in, Mr. Valentine. We have no public hearings this evening. We'll start with our first guest, Mr. Miller. I see that Mr. Miller is not currently in the room and in the interest of everyone's time, we'll continue to move on with the agenda and he will come up towards the end. The next item is an action item. It's a hold harmless agreement for 32 Angels Path. Mr. Valentine, if you would like to please kick it in and welcome. We had an opportunity to meet the residents here a few minutes ago before the meeting started, so welcome. And if you'd further tee that up for the board, Mark.
Sure. It was approached for a request for a hold harmless agreement at 32 Angels Path, passing around a sketch showing their property. They're looking to fence their backyard. I'll look and explain a bit more. As you can see on the north side, there's a storm sewer easement with a catch basin in that area. Explain that obviously would require a hold harmless agreement to have a fence within that area. We would also require those posts to be hand dug to make sure they don't impact our pipe. The applicant is well aware of that. He works with a ton of Webster's who's familiar with kind of how the town government works, needs, concerns of-
We're sorry.
Doing some of that.
(laughing).
But obviously they're here tonight requesting, you know, to allow a fence within an area, understand if and when we ever have to do get to the pipe. If we ever had to dig it up, you know, we would have to remove their fence if need be and it'd be at their cost to replace that fence.
Okay, great. Board, do you want to?
That's pretty much, I'm well aware of everything.
Provide or add or supplement my explanation of what you're looking to do.
Okay. Board, questions?
Is that like the low point in that backyard area?
Yeah, because I asked my neighbor. It drains the backyards into the, actually blind ties underneath the street into a catch basin across the street and it's, yeah, it just drains the backyards.
Little swell.
Yeah, there's a little swell that runs along all the backyards.
Typically, we have a drain every three lots.
Yeah.
So there'd be one just to the north and then it kind of collects each area. Also explained, you know, if you have put a board on board fence or something, you know, have it up high enough so that the water can flow underneath or it's a chain link fence that it can flow through so we don't create an impediment for-
Right, I was just going to ask, make sure that along the backside, there's no unnecessary.
Yeah, obviously we don't want a fence over the top of the structure either. There are other instances where people have got your two by two grate and somebody's put a fence over the top of it now, you know, that's our access point to flush it out.
To get it out and flush it out.
Make sure that, you know, either offsets or, you know, jogs around that corner.
Okay, all right.
I don't see anything out of the ordinary or exceptional as far as my concerns are. I would move to grant the request.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to grant the request. Further discussion from the board? Any additional comments from the applicants, homeowners around that?
No.
Okay, then I would just ask staff, any thing additional we should add to the record that we have not discussed on this?
No.
Okay, so it is motion on the table and seconded. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously and good luck. We'll just ask that you work with Mr. Valentine and his team as you get ready and he'll follow up with a short letter just to have that for your records.
There will be a resolution.
Oh, good point, yeah, that's right. We have a resolution. So thank you for that cause because it is, it is within, yeah.
Do you want me to come for that too or?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, great. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Have a great evening.
Nice meeting you as well. Much of our best to Mr. Nesbit.
I will.
All right, well now I was asking about him.
Thank you.
Okay, we will, we'll go back. I see that Mr. Miller is in the house, so we'll go back to that item on the agenda and you can come to the table as well, young lady, absolutely.
Hi. I haven't listened.
Apple didn't fall far from that tree, anyway.
No, no.
So, okay, so the next item that we have, this is Jake Miller at 88 Stone ledge Way, requesting a private storm pipe agreement. Mr. Valentine, handing out some material and I would ask to further tee this up for the board if you would, please.
Sure. Mr. Miller approached me about piping his backyard and it may be more evident kind of on the second 11 by 17 sheet I passed out show that there's kind of a drainage swell through his backyard. He's looking to pipe that so he can do some landscaping through there and not have such a deep drainage swell through his yard, which is understandable. We've been working with Town Council recently to develop an agreement that acknowledges or Mr. Miller would acknowledge that it is a private, would be a private pipe. It would not be owned and maintained by the town of Penfield. It would be his responsibility. Looking on the sheet, sorry, it's lot 69, kind of on the south end here.
Yep.
It would be his pipe if it became plugged, blocked, needed to be repaired. It's under his obligation liability to maintain, take care of the pipe. That would be an agreement. Obviously, we'd pass the resolution. He would sign it and that would be filed so it would run with the land acknowledging that he's piping that swell and then, you know, whatever other landscaping he wants to do, obviously he can landscape his property as needed. We just want to make sure that drainage is maintained, proper piping is put in, you know, but just to acknowledge that it's private, it's not town owned and we won't be maintaining it in the future.
Okay, so I see that there are a couple of, you know, the way the swells are for that area mark between lot 69 and 68 and then lot 69 and 70 and then Mr. Miller is proposing to pipe across his lot. How's the plan to handle those swells on the lot lines and how will that water be taken care of?
He can explain that. I mean, he'll have to grade that out. You know, have a pipeline section there with, you know, a flare at either end and then he's already talked about doing some rip rap to kind of, you know, handle those slopes that, you know, won't be erosion at the end of the pipe, but.
Yeah, it's 12 inch pipe. Will handle all the volume that we need. Right now, the current storm drain that's over there is 12 inches itself for all of the lots and currently right now, all of the backyards are actually funneling right to mine. So we're having a lot of standing water pooling. That's a separate issue, but this is going to really help to mitigate that. We're also going to be doing some wet species plantings over there to try to soak up some of that. I've spoken to the neighbors. They're fine with this.
And we'll be working with the developers. They're finalizing all the lots. The final grade really isn't yet in the neighborhood, so there are some other inlets. They're just not functioning as, as well as they probably should be. So we'll have to work with the final grades as each lot comes in. We don't have the topsoil and the seed on those lots. A lot of it is kind of coming down with this corner right now, but we'll work with the developer to, you know, make sure the grades work so the other inlets are just as effective.
And so as I take a look at this, the water is running from north to south across his lot and then continues around and essentially runs westerly?
Yeah, we have a dedicated pipe running between 70 and 71 with an end section that connects into a town dedicated system and then runs to our drainage between there. So he would have a pipe between, in his backyard, starting at 68 and then go into lot 70 on the west end, excuse me, maybe the south side.
Okay. All right.
Where did, I'm sorry again, where's the, the town pipe is sort of?
The town pipe comes between 70 and 71.
Okay.
So you can kind of see the manhole at the street, the circle there and then the pipe runs down the property. Then there is an end section backwards says contour 498. There's a little 498 at the back. That's the end of the pipe there and then he would pipe his part, kind of level the grade out over the top of it and then it would enter our pipe at the back end.
Mark, there's a section I can't hook into because that pipe is on lot 70.
Yep.
So that's where I'm going to have to leave it exposed. So you guys, if you need to get in there, can you get access to it?
Yep.
All right, board, questions, comments on this proposal, concerns?
Have you discussed, Mark, have you discussed it at the PRC?
We didn't specifically discuss this. We've discussed others similar to this. We had a few in Milford Crossing. We heard in, we heard Park wanted to do something similar. They opted not to come to the board as of yet, but that's why we've already kind of had an agreement in place. We've been speaking with Decorewitz about that and coming up with this private agreement that they acknowledge it's their pipe. You know, if it does become plugged or, you know, need to be replaced, you know, it's on the property. Mr. Miller signed it. Obviously, you know, if the board approves it, it'll run with the land so the next owner buys it. They know that that's, you know, a private pipe and not our, not our structure.
How many, how many homes are built here? How many are open lots?
In the whole subdivision, I believe there's four that are not sold. I don't know the exact number that are, I know they're still building some right now. Maybe there's a dozen or something that are left or in certain stages of being built. I believe there's only four left in the entire subdivision that are yet to be sold is just my understanding, but.
And so, Mark, as I, as I take a look at this, as, as it comes across Mr. Miller's property, it goes, goes on to the next, the next door property. So if he leaves an end section there, is there a yard, is there a yard inlet there or how is it going to get into the, the pipe and ultimately not create problems downstream, so to speak?
Yep, there is an open end section, so there'll be basically an end section coming out of Mr. Miller's yard and then there's an existing open end section.
Okay.
Going under the road just due to the grades out there. It's discharged to the south. All of this runs to the west and has to get over to Terrace Hill.
Okay.
By the time they got these backyards, they're flat or pipes and that's unfortunate. We're able to get, you know, a normal catch basin full depth and the grate on top, so it's an end section.
So it's open end section.
Again, so it'll flow out of his. We'll have to put some rip rap around that just to kind of stabilize this little at the end of his pipe and flow into his neighbor's yard. And then if his neighbor chose to do something similar or want to do some improvements in the future, obviously they would have to follow a similar process with Mark.
And you've taken a look at the 12 inch and you're comfortable from an engineering design standpoint that that is sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Miller shared the downstream pipe is a 12 inch as well and that's what carries it out of that area. So it not only picks up his half from 67 down, it also picks up from 72 down the other way. So if he at least matches that size of pipe, I don't have a concern of the size.
Okay, all right. Other questions?
I just have two thoughts. First, in situations like this, has the town in the past, I mean, I understand that Mr. Miller's talked to his neighbors. Have we talked to the neighbors? Or is there something that we would ask that is on record or sort of attached to this file that says, yes, I'm a neighbor, I understand what's going on and I'm okay with this?
Yeah, you don't want to be surprised.
I don't want the neighbors to be surprised and certainly come back to us and say, what did you do here? So I think first, I think we should consider having something formal from that neighbor or neighbors, whoever you think is impacted, sort of in the file with this. And second, I'd like to have PRC take a look at this. If they have not taken a look at this, I know that they've looked at Milford, but I would suggest that we just label this maybe for the next work session pending PRC and then pending what, Mark, you think is applicable or appropriate for some form of neighborhood communication or some form of documented acknowledgement, yeah.
I would second the table.
Okay, 68 and 70 would be the apparent lots on either side. If you spoke to them, we could get a letter, email from them.
70 isn't closed yet, but, so technically right now the builder, because it's in construction.
Or 70?
Lot 70.
Is it under construction right now?
It's still under concern.
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right, so there is a motion on the table to table this item for what I captured, PRC input and notification of the adjacent neighbors on that. And I think I heard a second from Linda on that. Would ask for any further discussion or comments on this matter? I'd ask Mr. Miller, any comments input or further input that you might have on this at this time?
No, I mean, the only other parts I've been working out for with Mark is that, I mean, it's a mud pit back there right now because we are getting all of the water. So I have safety concerns for all the little ones because if they run back there, they get stuck. So they're working on it, but there's many other storm drains. Everything's bypassing those. And so recently until I was working with the developer, there wasn't any silt fencing, so everything's just getting completely clogged up. It's just causing issues. The street flooded by almost two feet. My backyard was underwater by almost four feet at one point. It's just taken a while. So this is going to help us alleviate those concerns. And I understand that they can't get the pipe any deeper because of the dolomite, just the bedrock that we have there. It's okay. It's just a matter of how we do this. So I will wait because obviously we need everybody to, you know, I think notifying everyone over there is great. I just don't know how we're going to do number 70 because she hasn't closed on it.
Okay, so I would then ask that we work with the developer and make sure the developer has the opportunity to notify the neighbor of coming in on that.
Yeah, so the salespeople can certainly get ahold of them.
Yep, absolutely.
I'll share the salesperson's name with you, Mark, and then however formal we want to do this, just to at least get it out there. Because they're already talking about us doing their properties, but I'm just trying to start this and staying ahead of this.
Okay. Are you, are you physically in the house at this time?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then, and then the home to the north is occupied as well?
Occupied as well.
So that would be 60, that would be 68?
68, yes.
Okay.
They're interested in a similar design, but I told them I was going to stop here and see what the process was first.
Got it.
So.
All right, and if, certainly if they have, if they have an interest, if you're speaking with them and they have an interest, putting that, putting that together, you know, so that everybody's got all of that information out there, I think would be appropriate as well. So, you know, feedback back to them. If they're going to get it one way or the other, whether it's from the town or yourself or both.
Yeah, otherwise, you know, if they don't decide to do it, any of the existing water, waterways are still going to be open and clean. It's just going to be the same volume of water moving down that pipe that we create versus anything else.
Right.
So we're not going to create any more water by doing what we are. We're actually going to speed it up and bury it.
Okay, all right, very good. So thank you. Mark, you've got a couple of action items you'll follow up and we'll show this as a table matter for our next meeting. Okay, so there's a motion, a second, seeing no further discussion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the matter is tabled. Thank you. All right, take care.
Thank you.
We'll move on, we'll move on to the, back to our action items and we'll take a look at the update of park lodge fees. Mr. Bylow, welcome.
Thank you. So this came about, I've been working with Jimmy Kreckman regards to the lodge structure that we currently have for just our enclosed lodges, Harris Whalen and Dolomite. So this is only applicable to those two facilities. The last time that, the last time that we did any sort of lodge fee structure for those was about six years ago. So it's been a while. And what we did was back in the early spring, we did a benchmark and we tried to do a benchmark every couple of years. It's not, it's not a perfect benchmark because facilities are different. The amenities that are in them are a little bit different. Just the maintenance of them and the upkeep of them are a little different. But we did do a benchmark and I can share this with everybody if you want to take one and pass it around. From all the enclosed lodges, what the town is, who maintains, if it's a county park, what the capacity is, and then their fee structure, which is either going to be similar to ours, a non-resident resident rate and then a weekday or weekend rate. And that's, that's even a little difficult sometimes to be able to track because some, some municipalities or groups consider a weekend rate, Saturday, Sunday, where we consider it a Friday, Saturday or Sunday. So you'll see the information that's on there. If you look at it, we sort of fall right about in the middle. And again, that can be a little deceiving just because of the, of the, the other lodges that are what I'll say similar in nature in regards to the amenities that are inside them. So when Jim and I were talking, there were actually two parts to this. Not only the fee structure modifying that, and then we're also looking at change in the hours of operation. That's also listed on this benchmark. Right now, our hours of operation is we open at nine, we close at 10. So the renter has it for the full day. It's pretty much all over the board. Some groups don't go in until the afternoon and some groups go in for a full day. They may do a setup in the morning but not have their party till the evening, but they've got the lodge for the whole day.
Right.
What we've been running into quite a bit recently is that people are looking to get in a little bit before nine o'clock. They're looking to get in earlier, especially if the use of the lodge is something on a weekend where it's morning. They'd like to get in before nine, do their setup, et cetera. So the two recommendations that we're looking to go forward are, one, change the lodge fee structure by increasing our rate for our two enclosed lodges, $10 across the board. So that's resident, non-resident, weekday, weekend rental. And then changing our hours from a 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM to an 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So leaving our hours closed the same, but just adding that extra hour just for convenience for people to get in.
Do they, I have never gone and got a lodge that early in the morning. Is that something, do people come the day before and get the key or something?
The way, the way the rental process works is when they reserve it, they'll get a call from the office on the Wednesday prior to their rental. They can start coming in anytime after they receive that call. Just, it's based on the number of keys that we have and then they are, they're to return those keys Monday, Tuesday so that they're back in circulation so we can start calling again on Wednesday. Typically, most people for a Friday, Saturday, Sunday will come in and get the key rental on Friday. Just as a statistic, we did pull this number and Sarah did a lot of this legwork in our office, which again makes it so much easier to be able to see what else is offered, you know, throughout the county. But the other thing that she did pull together this morning actually was from a 2017 statistic, Harris Whalen was used and I only had her pulled for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so we're a weekend rate or weekend round. Harris Whalen was rented 84% of available dates in 2017. Dolomite was rented 87% of the time for available dates. So from a usage standpoint, you know, you think, you think typically, you know, is Dolomite getting used on a Friday in the month of February, which is, you know, quieter time versus the summer. You know, 87% of usage rate for Friday, Saturday, Sunday is a pretty, pretty good percentage of usage. So the increase in the cost, while it may not be significant over the course of time, what Jim and I have started to see, and Jim especially, is the wear and tear on the facility. Both facilities had to go through an update this, this year with, with the paint. Both facilities were painted just because of that amount of usage. We're starting to see wear and tear on the appliances. Harris Whalen's appliances have been replaced in the last year to a year and a half. We're expecting probably similar with Dolomite. And the other thing that we're starting to see more of now, just because of the, the amount of usage that the lodges are getting, is the tables and chairs. And if you've ever priced what tables and chairs cost, it would blow you away. So we're starting to have to put together a plan for replacement of some of those. So it would help offset some of that cost.
And the difference, primarily the difference between the rental fee for Harris Whalen versus Dolomite piece of that is the lack of air conditioning.
Correct.
At Harris Whalen Park.
That is correct, yep. And the addition of having a fireplace. When we, when this structure was done, even things such as the fridge, the freezer that were at Harris Whalen at the time were more residential type. Now they're just because of the usage.
Commercial.
They're more commercial based. And so they're, you know, they're similar fridge and freezers.
Okay, board, comments for Chris? Questions?
It makes sense to me. We need to update the facilities that are so popular in the town and I would move that we increase the fee and change the time.
Yeah, the only thing I would say on the time, Chris, is, I mean, we're currently at nine?
We're currently at nine.
And you're proposing eight?
Correct.
I mean, it looks as if, first of all, nine is just about the earliest anywhere. So eight's certainly going to be the earliest. I just trying to keep the honest people honest in a way. I mean, eight is eight. I mean, the last thing you want is by moving up to eight, you have people there at seven o'clock.
We know that we'll probably still get that. From an alarm standpoint, the alarms don't go off until security goes through in the morning and unlocks. So if they, if the people who do try to go in early, they're going to get a visitor before.
Okay.
Before.
In uniform.
I mean, that, that's good to know because, I mean, it's just, you know, if they have the key.
Correct. Well, and, and, you know, we, we always sort of, I'll say, concerned about that anyways. If we give the key on Wednesday.
Right, they could be in there at almost any time.
And, I don't know, wherever it might be.
Yeah.
It's very few times that we've run into that. I won't say that it hasn't.
Right.
But luckily we've, you know, with the security monitoring the facilities, if all of a sudden, you know, they don't have anything on the schedule on a Thursday and they go to secure the building at night and they go to lock it up and they're seeing streamers hanging up and, you know, stuff in the refrigerator, they'll make a call. So, but again, if that happens three times in a, in a year, that's, that's a lot, so.
Are renters advised that the security is set?
When they, when they come in to get that key, they're given a, I'll call it a packet. They're given probably three sheets, one being what to do the day of their rental in case there's an issue. I don't know, the lights won't turn on, the contact information. But it also has their, what time they can get in, has the information about if the alarm does go off, what they should do. Has all of that kind of necessary information. Years ago, it was probably about a half a page and now with the different things that they're, you know, we want to make sure they're aware of, it's turned into about a two-page.
You know, as part of, it's not really a topic of conversation tonight, I guess, but as far as, you know, as you're going through the master plan for the parks, as you start to price out new amenities, you know, maybe it would be a good opportunity or timely to also look at enhanced security or perhaps key codes or whatever it may be to just enhance the security of the, of the two lodges or the facilities themselves as.
Well, update.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the exception of a home, really. I don't really know many keys anymore, so.
Right. There's, Jim, Jim is.
Kind of fobs or whatever.
I've seen, Jim is, Jim is throwing around the idea of possibly turning it into a fob system so they can remote, unlock it remotely at a clock versus having to do. And that would also save from a process for people coming and going, you know, you do. The one, the one plus that we do have with the people coming and going is it's a little more accountable for them when they do leave the lodge, that if they leave the lodge, not as they're supposed to, they got to come in and if we're aware that they've left the lodge, they left it a mess, they left garbage. We can address it with them. If they don't have to come in, then we're going to track them down. So it does, we do at least when they come in, we, you know, we receive their deposit. So we do have, we do have some of that as stakeholder.
It's good to have that personal contact.
Yep.
Okay, good. So Linda has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Rob, Rob, a second. Further discussion? Seeing none. Chris, again, thank you for the update and thoroughness. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it carries. You've got a resolution and this will take effect.
That's actually a good point. We're going to, we're, it's going to be effect for 2019 priority into 2018 process anyways.
And when did the lodge, when does it open?
That will start, that will start on December. I think it's December 5th. We've gone back to our original where we tried to get it that first Wednesday in December. So I think it's December 5th. Don't quote me on it, but I believe that's.
Okay, good. And you'll get a resolution in for the board. You can do that in, maybe over the next couple of meetings and we'll get, get that memorialized. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next items, a request for conditional use permit for law office apartment at 1771 Penfield Road. We heard that matter last, last week and Mr. Castello, I'll let you further tee it up from there.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Pettenaro represented the Lewis family, Lewis slash Miller family. As he noted.
And is that?
No.
No? Okay, got it. I just want to make sure.
No, they're not, nobody's here to add to that.
Okay, not a problem.
As noted, Mr. Lewis will run his, one of his law offices out of the site. He has another one at a remote location. It'll be an appointment only situation. His mother, who is also the resident in the apartment upstairs, this is paralegal, so the two of them will run that business. There are currently about eight spaces on the site, eight to 10. They have not finalized the paving. As you know, we've talked about the paving process and the driveway there has not been completed yet. We are still working. We are still working with them on that issue. They are in the process of preparing a signed package for the property for your review and approval. And once I get that, I'll get it to you immediately. And other than that, that's pretty much what they're offering.
Can you just remind me, you may have a map or something, just remind me then where the access drive?
Yes, I'd be happy to. The access drive being proposed for the site is now going to be 15 feet north of the stand of trees that we've shown. So, we've identified that as being the most appropriate location. There will be some grading that will shave back the hills a little bit, and then regrade those and seed them. The area that's going to be disturbed with that material will be taken to the back, and actually will be creating a impoundment area so they can treat water on-site, because they are creating more impervious material or surface on the area. They're obligated to put in some type of stormwater quality management pond, and they're going to do that as part of the process.
And the signage for, do you come for some sort of sign?
He's proposing a freestanding sign out by the road.
Get the access too, right?
Well, yes, but I want to see what that's going to be. In essence, they really only need an enter exit sign at that location.
That's true.
They don't need more than that.
As long as people know, read the number of the address or something like that.
Yes, exactly. But they don't need anything ostentatious that will require permits.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? All right.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? Okay, matter carries. Mark, you'll have a resolution for, excuse me, Cas. I was looking at him.
I play Mark every so often.
Every once in a while, you guys, yeah, sometimes I just can't tell the two of you guys together, thanks for, now that you're wearing glasses more often.
It's like the family, you just name names.
We'll figure it out.
Our next call, we're going to have like four or five Marks or Georges or something like that. So, you'll put a resolution together. It will not be until the September 5th.
That's right.
Town board meeting. Next week will be a bye week, as they say. Okay, so, thank you for that, Cas, and thank you for the follow-up with that. All right, the next item is a termination of the Farmstead area at 1315 Sweets Corners Road. Mr. Valentine, Mr. Wickham, please come to the table.
This is the, say, the wrap-up or the culmination of Mr. Wickham's project. As the board remember, he was here many months ago, first talking about the uses in the conservation easement area, as well as the Farmstead piece, I think it was earlier this spring. He's been since working with the planning board on his site plan application. I have the site plans here if the board wants to see those. But he's been working on that, and as part of that is working on, I see, defining and refining that Farmstead area. So, I have up on the wall kind of what the original Farmstead was, and then the planning board's been working with him to kind of refine that, so it's gotten smaller than, you know, what came in originally, separated out the buffer areas to the neighbors as part of their review. The planning board has recently granted their approvals for the site plan portion of it, so then in keeping with the easement, it's necessary for Mr. Wickham to come back tonight and work with the board to designate that final Farmstead area, and then that'll be an amendment to that conservation easement, similar we did with Okinawa.
Okay.
It looks as if the size and location of the building has changed too, right?
Through some of the stuff, yeah, they've tweaked the building, they've kind of.
Yeah, the planning board.
Yep, the planning board has worked to locate more of the buildings and the amenities into the mixed-use area. You know, the board's concerns was minimizing what was the impact to the Farmstead area. So, it's kind of just the CSA building, which he's already been doing, that's for the Upek apples, pumpkins, the parking lot in the front, which this board approved through a grading and filting permit, which is already well under construction today, getting ahead for this year's season, and then locating most of the other amenities, the events barn, some of the other activities in that mixed-use area to the south.
Okay. Board, this is not the first time that we've seen this. We had the opportunity to review at a higher level when Bill and his family came in and gave an overview. We did have an opportunity to have a discussion about the parking for filling grade, and then one of the items that complete the cycle was once the planning board went through and worked through all of the site plan items, final discussion on what they believed was location comes back to us to either support that decision or ask for any other additions, deletions, enhancements, et cetera. So, with that, questions, further questions of either the applicant or of staff?
I guess the only, not so much on the Farmstead, I just have a question. It's been a while since we've reviewed it, but then, so on the mixed-use portion of it, the stormwater easement, is that, with all the work that's being done on-site, is that size, location, is that adequate enough for the size of the scope that's being proposed?
There's some infiltration areas along the parking lot to do some infiltration. Most of the rest of it is left agricultural. This picks up the impervious area from the buildings, and then as well as the pathway areas, channels it down to this corner, and then ultimately there's, you know, a drainage way that kind of goes north to south, cuts through, and eventually goes down into Chippingham and south from there. So, I've been working with his engineer and applicant, providing drainage calculations. And let's say I have the site plan that kind of shows the boundary, but that would be the easement area that we would take an inspection easement over, similar we do with any pond, gives us the right to go in and inspect, make sure it's being maintained, operating properly.
Okay. And I think part of the package that Mark had sent out, there was the resolution form from the planning board. It was also the memo that they put forth to the town board as well. The memo will be in July 26th, and the planning board resolution August 9th.
I think we hit all the points that we had discussed or had been discussed.
Right, it's just the board was supportive of location. Yeah, so I, we're in the same, I think we're in the same spot as the planning board, because they just worked on the site a little more than, it's basically what we were looking at. So, nothing's really gone from what we stood with. So, I would move that we support this.
Before we go on, so, hold your motions for a second. I'd give Mr. Wickham an opportunity, if there's anything he would like to add to the record that you think is appropriate or has not been already added to multiple records thus far.
We've been added to multiple records so far, so we're good.
Okay, all right.
Ready to move forward.
All right, so Linda, you're offering a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and similar to what was done from an Okinawa, you know, the next process is that we will prepare a resolution to get before the board to memorialize that as part of the conservation easement that we have, and get that in place. So, Mark, again, we'll look to do that. I'm guessing with the extra week, it would not be a problem to have that before the board on the 5th of September.
Yeah, I'll work with the council to make sure we get that together.
Excellent. All right. Been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And good luck with the continued development of that project.
Thank you.
All right.
Don't go too far.
I thought there was more to this.
That's right.
Not done yet.
Make them distinct.
So, we'll move on to the next item, and that's a sidewalk waiver request at 1303-1315 Sweets Corners Road and 1689 Dublin Road. This is part of the earlier discussion we had, but as Mark, Valentine, and I talked, they're two separate and distinct items, so we broke them out accordingly. So, with that, we will now take up the review of the sidewalk component. So, Mr. Valentine?
This is the entrance, I put my up here. It took me eight years.
Now you got your name on something.
I know. So, this is west of that, let's see, magic line that we established, so it would come to the town board as part of it. Obviously, there's a lot of frontage on these areas here. Running it through our new formula and everything else, basically, it's two lots of development. It's residential. Under our current waiver clause, it would basically be $5,000 per lot as a maximum fee, or it would be $10,000 combined for the two areas of development. PRC is supportive, and the planning board was supportive of the waiver. PRC's also discussed, well, there's nothing to tie into right now. We could see potential, and obviously, that's why we're taking easements all the way around. Future connection to the mixed-use, but we don't know what that connection is, so I got to get a picture map up. So, PRC discussed, is there an option for a connection at least in this portion here, or if there's a stone dust path, if someone, you know, has developed a mixed-use in the future, you know, we can see families wanting to walk over to the farmer, sorry, I'm standing in front of you. Be something here in the front, you know, this area is fenced off, you know, to kind of contain people. Here's the focus at the CSA building, funnel people through here, build, please jump in, get off track, you know, people can get their items going and have their daily events. Put PRC stuff somewhere, if there was thought to connect in here, you know, or take the waiver fee, and, you know, we have easements, and then if and when that comes out, you know, that could be developed in the future. But obviously, along here, there are no current sidewalks in this area of Dublin Road. Way down the south end, there's some, currently, actually, there is no other sidewalks on Sweets Corner either, so there's really nothing to tie into today. This piece is mixed-use, as well as obviously this piece, you know, off-lane corners, no mixed-use.
All right. So, what happens then if you give the waiver and you want the easement? What's the financial impact for it?
It would be $10,000, because it's 5,000 for each piece, so you'd be paying the general fund, you know, for that, and then obviously, we take sidewalk easements all the way around. So, if and when 100 years from now, we want sidewalks in Dublin Road, you know, obviously, there's the easements in place.
Well, it's more likely at Sweets Corners or whatever.
And that's what I say, this piece in here is, you know, obviously, there's nothing proposed here right now, you know, but if it went in the future, we always take the easement. Anytime, you know, we've granted a waiver, any part of Pennfield, we take easement.
Did you identify the cost of what it would be to install sidewalks?
Our current cost, basically, this is 500 feet from here, and I just ran into the existing driveway, you know, this could be a different path to here, 500 feet at the county's cost, private a little bit better. We pay 3675 millennial foot right now, so that's 18,350 bucks is the overall cost of concrete sidewalks that's called today from here to there. If it was less than that or something, you'd be pretty similar to the $10,000 waiver fee if they tightened to this driveway or something.
Well, then you just said the PRC and the planning board either thought that was something that we need right now.
PRC was supportive of the full waiver. PRC just discussed, you know.
As something for this board to consider.
Yeah, we looked at it and said, you know, if and when this develops, and this is a mixed-use here, housing and whatnot, you know, we could see families wanting to walk over, you know, if you could push a stroller, ride a bike, just get over to it.
Right. So, if we approved this waiver, would that be in a resolution? Is it a tickler in your mind to remember that in the future?
Yeah, we track all of our waivers as the why and the what, and then obviously, also, again, so as he comes back in the future for something else, you know, we don't charge the person a waiver fee again. We have our files the same, now if you paid us waiver fee back in 2018, you know, we don't double-dip people for that unless the project drastically changed and it was redeveloped or something else, we'll get it fresh.
Mark, this is the first I've heard of the waiver fee, so I wasn't aware of that. It is what it is, but. Have two properties that were? I know there's two properties.
Two parcels. So, our maximum, I can, obviously, I can share.
What's the minimum?
The minimum is, obviously, the installation, the construction cost.
No, you said the maximum is 5,000 per, I said, what's the minimum?
Basically, it's compliance, it's either sidewalk installation, you install the sidewalks, and/or we run the math, I mean, if you had a 50-foot wide frontage lot, you know, we're not going to charge you $5,000 when it's $2,000 to install the sidewalk. So, since, I mean, ran through it, you're at 3,200 millennial feet of road frontage, 3,200 millennial feet times whatever, you're at $120,000. If it was full compliance, and the board said, we're not supportive of the waiver, you install the sidewalks, that's $120,000 cost. So, when the board revised the policy, they tried to have a cap, so there was no undue burden on one individual parcel for this case in particular. You've got a lot of frontage, you've got a lot of area, if they say full compliance, $120,000 for one property is, you know, an undue burden. So, they said, here's kind of a cap, so we're not.
Not very likely that the easement will ever have sidewalk, but it is what it is.
It'll be well beyond my lifetime, and somebody else's thought consideration.
You never know.
Thanks for somebody else.
Were there questions, comments? Okay. So, on the table is a waiver of those properties, 1303-1315 Sweets Corners Road, as well as 1689 Dublin Road.
I would move to grant the waiver request.
That's seconded.
So, it's been moved and seconded, further discussion? Board, further discussion, staff, further discussion, applicant? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Now I'm good.
Now you're good.
Done.
Now you're good, and now you're done?
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, this will take us from action items to informational items, and the only informational item we have is the September 5th public hearing for a request for outdoor music at 1221 Empire Boulevard, and for a personal training gym at 1844 Pennfield Road. And Mr. Castello, this is more of an update for the board, especially the one, the second item about the personal training gym, because the resolution did go in last meeting, and we did not have an opportunity to discuss this, the work session, so with that.
They're leasing the basement of the building, so.
So, why don't you?
It's the Dawson Building.
So, why don't you go through and hit both of those?
And then, again, we had that, we had the event over K2, then, right, I went by around a quarter to eight. I did not participate in it anyway, but I did go by at a quarter to eight, and it was basically nothing there. There were a few people left parked in the parking lot, but it was quiet.
Did you hear any complaints?
I haven't. I have not. Yeah, and I'm still waiting to hear from the owners to see what actions they took in terms of descore readings and that type of thing.
You have to know that before the public.
Yes, and you will.
Feel for it.
Yep.
Okay.
It's encouraging, though.
And so, the item for the personal training, as he indicated, the Dawson Building, and again, we put that in because of the 5th, because of the 5th Wednesday of August, and cancellation of a meeting in September because of the holiday, a Jewish holiday, fairness to the applicant, we wanted to get that in. So, we got the resolution in, but wanted to make sure the board, if they had any particular questions before the public hearing, had an opportunity for Jim to discuss.
We could have gotten an application, we could have had a public hearing until October, if you hadn't done what you did to get them in.
Okay, so what's a mean personal gym? Is it the owners?
It's a husband and wife, they're going to be doing appointment-only type training.
Oh, okay. At first.
Yep.
That completes our agenda, and being no further business to come before the board, the August 22nd, 2018 work session of the town board stands adjourned at 7:48 p.m. Thank you for everyone that participated. Thank you to Pennfield TV for your support. Since you guys are here.